Okay, if I could have everybody's attention, we'll go ahead and open the board meeting. We do have a quorum of board members present. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The very first item of business that I affirm the newly appointed board member. Ms. Richardson, if you would please come forward.
Come on.
You would raise your right hand and put your left hand on the floor and complete after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Katie H. Richardson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of Alabama.
The Constitution of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen.
So long as I continue a citizen.
Thereof.
Thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly discharge.
And that I will faithfully and honestly discharge.
The duties of the Office of the Uphaul City Board of Education Board Member.
The duties of the Office of the Uphaul City's Board of Education Board Member.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. And then, as required by the School Board Governance Act of 2012, Katie has an affirmation that she'd like to read.
I do hereby affirm all of the following principles of educational governance. That each decision, action, and vote I take or make as a member of the school board shall be based solely on the needs and interests of students or the system. That I will take or make no decision, action, or vote to serve or promote my personal, political, or pecuniary interest. That each decision, action, and vote I take or make shall be based on the educational interest of the school system as a whole. That I will consider the views of all members of the board and the superintendent before making a decision or taking an action on any measure or proposal before the board. That except to the extent otherwise provided by law, I shall take formal action only upon the written recommendation of and in consultation with the superintendent, and that I may not individually or jointly attempt to direct or corrupt the operations of the school system in a manner inconsistent with the discharge of the statutory functions and responsibilities of the superintendent. That I shall actively promote public support for the school system and a sound statewide system of public education, and shall endorse ideas, initiatives, and programs that are designed to improve the quality of public education for all students. That I shall attend scheduled meetings and actively participate in school system functions, activities, and training programs that promote quality boardmanship unless good causes shown.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Yeah, welcome aboard, and we're glad to have you. All right, the next item of business, delegations, commendations, and awards. Do we have anyone to address the board? If not, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. I'll have received copies of the June 12th, June 25th, and the work session minutes from June 29th. Is there a motion for approval? All in favor? Aye, opposed. Minutes are approved. Superintendent's report.
For A, Mr. Bailey has a facilities update for us.
Good evening, how are you all doing?
Good.
Busy summer, busy summer. Always is. Our EES drainage project, we're holding it 98 percent complete. The only reason we haven't moved off that number is I've not received a change order yet for the recommendations made by the state inspector on adding the pollards and the chain link fence around the wall. So I'm still waiting on that change order before we complete it, but it will not stop us from using the property of facilities as is right now. Summer floor cleaning, we have completed Admiral Middle School, primary school, the high school, and the central office ELC. They are starting at the elementary school on Wednesday, and they estimate that they'll be in there about five days, and then that will complete our summer floor cleaning. We're about 70 percent of the time, when I wrote this, we were at 65, but now we're about 70 percent complete. All the girls athletic renovations was out there today a couple of different times. We have just a few more lights to install. All the painting is completed, everything has been ripped out. We're starting to clean up now, and we will install the flooring. Most of the ceiling tiles are in now, but we will install the flooring, you know, next week, and then we will do some touch-up painting, install the toilets, the new replacement toilets, and put the partitions back in place, but we're on schedule. We'll be finished before school starts back on that. EES painting, it was at 95 percent complete last week, but we're only 100 percent. I had walked through the school two different times to mark different spots. They have corrected those spots along with the gym. I've not had time to do the exterior, because they were still doing the exterior on Thursday and Friday. I will check the exterior and make sure that we don't have any areas that we need to go back and do on that. Our maintenance staff completed 102 work orders out of the 116 work orders entered for the month of June, so they continue to do a good job this time of year. We just have, we have a lot of stuff going on, and they have been working on several different projects for us. They're at the high school also, so we're having the palace of time between what we're doing as part of the athletic renovations based on our regular work order. So far, everybody has been doing a good job there. Just a little quick safety update. We will be installing our automated door buzzers starting next week at the schools. Tried to hold off as long as we can because we do not have a secretary in every location in summer, so we did not want to put the systems in and the doors be locked and someone couldn't come in the building because there would be nobody there to monitor it, but we will be starting to install those next week. We are meeting with the police department also. I talked to Chief Watkins earlier on about providing a secondary SRO for our locations, and he's kind of okay with it. We did have this discussion back in the spring, I believe it was February, March, and the problem is them not having the funds to pay for people. Their problem is finding people. He even made a comment that he thought he could possibly have something worked out, but then he found out one of his other officers was applying for a job in Columbus, so that's going to put him down a little further. So their issue is not being able to fund it or want to do it for us. Their issue is just, you know, having the personnel and being able to keep personnel. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
For B is a supplemental food bid. I know, Mr. Bailey, I was going to say, why are you up there, or Ms. Turchiano? Because it...
This thing is not here.
Yes, it's information only, but it is just kind of an overview.
On this one, Ms. Turchiano had the opportunity to participate or be part of an add-on bid that Dope and City Schools was doing called the WAPA, or they call it WAPA, but it's Wiregrass Area Purchasing Alliance, and it was for some supplemental items that the child nutrition program can use, different type of pizzas, different ti- just different type of foods that you normally can't get or that we would normally not bid out. But Henry County, Houston County, Dope and City Schools, Ozark, Dale County, I mean, there were several counties around this area that went in as part of this bid, and that kind of makes it a consortium, but we just wanted to let the board know it doesn't require any approval because it was done through Dope and City Schools. Their board will actually approve the bid. We just have the opportunity to purchase off of it if we would like to.
Thank you. Ellis.
Ms. Ellis.
Please tell them for you the June financial report. Well, we're three quarters of the way through this fiscal year. Revenues are reported at just over 76 percent for general fund and 65 percent for expenditures if you look at our local revenues. As of June, the end of June, we pretty much already met what we budgeted, and we had budgeted right on what we received last year, so considering we still have three months worth to come in, we should end pretty well with revenues. That's where we are.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. All right, moving into new business, first item is the superintendent's assessment. I'd like to invite Ms. Susan Salter of Alabama Association of School Boards to the podium to present her findings.
Susan, can we load this for me? There's a folder on there called Superintendent Evaluation, and then within that you follow.
Thank you.
Well, Susan's getting that loaded. In the interest of time, I will go ahead and start. First of all, we appreciate the opportunity to work with y'all on the evaluation. For the benefit of those in the audience and newest board member, this board got training about a year ago and contracted with AASV to do both the CSFO's evaluation and the superintendent's. So we did the CSFO back, uh, during the winter, and so this is the culmination of that, of the contract, well, almost the culmination. The next step after this will be goal setting, which we will work with the board officers and superintendent to get scheduled, hopefully in the next few weeks. Just as a reminder of our process, all four of the board members who were seated at the time have completed this instrument. The board also opted to include the superintendent's direct report, easy for me to say, direct reports, and 12 of the 14 who were invited opted to do so. Direct reports were defined as all the principals and the central office leadership, which is typically, we don't use specific titles because that varies from system to system, but it was a good participation rate by that group. All right, Susan, if you don't mind, if you'll advance to the next slide, and one more after that. Okay, so this is the rating scale that was used. It was a five-point scale, obviously, as we talked about in the training so long ago A three is meets expectations. I find in a lot of our systems, there is a culture that if you don't get a five in every category, somehow that's a bad thing. But three is meets expectations. Nobody's a rock star in every category, and so as we go through this, you'll see, I'm going to give you a big picture, what you said collectively, and then we'll disaggregate it so that you can see where the board was in complete agreement and where there was some differences in, or were some differences in the way the board members rated things. But as you can see, we defined each term, and this was at the beginning of the instrument. We asked every board member if you rated anything, no matter what you rated things, to refer back to the scale and to be sure that we were trying to all grade things on the same basic understanding. Okay, if you'll go on to the next one, and then the one after that. So, the board completed the larger of the two instruments. It's 10 categories. It's 40-plus indicators across these categories. They cover a real spectrum of things that superintendents do. Everything from the way they work with the board to the way they manage or oversee the system's funding, facilities, staff, all of that sort of thing. I will tell you, in looking at the big picture, what you see on this slide is the aggregate, what the board collectively rated her performance. That black line at the three is meets expectations, so there are some areas for some growth, but there are also some areas where she is meeting or slightly exceeding the board's expectations. Overall, she received a 2.9, which is just below meets expectations on this instrument. The areas of strength that were identified, hands down, her ability as an instructional leader and to lead improvement in the curriculum and instructional program, her work being supportive of the staff and of their professional growth through professional development, and attempting to brand the system, make sure that the community sees the system in a positive light through social media, through working with the regular media, through making sure that facilities and that sort of thing are updated and presentable and well-maintained. Clear that she has a strong drive to improve the system and determination, what in a lot of education circles now we call resilience. There was also, though, a couple of areas that were potential for growth, the primary one being communication skills, particularly communication with this board, and in making sure that there is a climate in which employees feel valued and where problems are dealt with in an even-handed, steady manner. And we'll talk about that some as we go through here. As you look at these categories that are up here, her highest scores from the board were in the area of technology management, which the direct reports also agreed was a strength of hers in encouraging the use of technology, and both in the classroom and in the administration of the system, and community relations. Again, going back to the using the social media, using the regular media, working with constituents to make sure that they understand the mission, vision, goals of the system. And in the areas for potential growth, her lowest score from the board was in personnel management, and this goes back to the issue of the climate in which problems are dealt with, the resolution, particularly from the board's standpoint, of problems as they occur and handling them in an even-handed manner. You see, there were a couple of others there that were just below meets expectations as well, the CEO of the school board and the educational leadership of the schools and communication and interpersonal skills, and all of these kind of tie into that communication piece, and we'll talk about that a little bit more as we go through this. Susan, if you'll advance it one more. Now, as I mentioned, what I showed you before was the aggregate, and as you know, she doesn't work for any one of you individually, but she works for the five of you collectively, and so that previous chart is the one that really tells her how she's doing in the assessment of the team as a whole. But it is also helpful to know, did I get a three because everybody said it was a three, or did I get a three because some people thought it was a five and some people thought it was a two? And so we disaggregate it to give you, and her in particular, so that she can use this as a tool for growth, because at the end of the day, this evaluation is about helping her grow and be sure she's on the same page as this board. So that's why these numbers are disaggregated, and the ones you see from here will be. What you see from this chart, each board member is represented by a different color. You see that one board member, number one, represented by the light blue bar, is the most satisfied, and then the rest, and rating her mostly between a three and a four on everything, and then the rest of the board members rating her generally somewhere in the vicinity of meets expectations, but some of the scores were in the area of needs improvement. So Susan, if you'll go one more. So I'm not going to hit every indicator, we'd be here all night, but I'm going to hit just some of the broad takeaway points. Looking at her work as the CSFO, I mean, the CEO of the school board, as I mentioned, this category was a 2.8, and on this chart, you see there's one more bar in each of the group of indicators. That represents the average for that indicator. Her highest score in the work of working with the board was implementing board policies, where she got a 3.3, so slightly above meets expectations, and keeping the board informed on state issues and regs and education trends. Right in the middle was the area, this rating was actually the lowest of the entire evaluation. She received a needs improvement for effectively serving as a liaison between the board and the personnel, and again, it appears that this comes back to the issue of communication and meeting the board's expectations about how personnel issues will be addressed. And then the last one, performing the duties of the CEO within the job description, was a 2.5, again, in the needs improvement categories. And in our assessment, this is a reflection, again, of working communication skills, staying on the same page with the board. I did not say this at the beginning, but just as a reminder, again, for our new board member, our process is always, before these results are made public, we sit down with the president and vice president and the superintendent to go over them privately because nobody should ever see the results of their evaluation for the first time in public. That's just a matter of professionalism. So as we talked about this today, one of the things that we talked about was, in fact, ways that she could work with the board more effectively to be sure that she's responding to your requests for information in a timely, complete manner, that you are getting the information you feel that you need to make decisions, and just that there's more of an effort to get what I tend to call clear and specific agreements before you leave the board table. When you complete a discussion, the board president coming back and saying, "Okay, now, as I understand it, this is where we're headed going forward," and everybody having the opportunity to say, "Yes, that's my understanding," or "Wait, wait, that's not what I thought," which I think will address some of these concerns. We also, as I mentioned, will do the goal setting, and at whatever point that we do that, some of these issues can be fleshed out in a little bit more detail. So Susan, if you'll move to the next one, the educational leadership of the school. A 2.8 was the average for this category. Again, you see that a fair number of these indicators have meets or exceeds expectations as ratings. Overall, the strengths in the educational leadership were, again, the curriculum and instruction work, which is that second set of indicator, or the second set of bars, and effectively communicating the mission, vision, goals to parents. So that piece and the leadership on achievement comes through in multiple indicators. The areas for growth were demonstrating problem-solving and decision-making skills, which were in the needs improvement range, although, again, when we get to the direct reports, you'll see that they rated that about a point, a little more than a point higher, and there may be some additional conversation that needs to be had with the superintendent about how she can show this board that she is making decisions in accordance with your broad expectation of how this system will operate. It is a little bit of a slippery slope in that she's in charge of day-to-day administration, and you are the governance team, but you have not just the ability, but the responsibility to set those broad parameters for how you want problems handled and resolved. And one of the things that we discussed today, that probably both these areas of potential growth could be summed up in perhaps a more deliberate, slightly slower, thoughtful way of making decisions, you know. One of my weaknesses as an employee is that I tend to make every decision on the fly, and so, you know, sort of slowing down and being more deliberate and thoughtful as decisions get made. Looking at personnel management, this one was a 2.6. Again, you see the lowest indicators, the 2.5 were most of these indicators, though the one in the middle, keeping the personnel, I mean, the policies current was meets expectation, and the board was unanimous on that. But the employee actions being there, which is that last indicator, again, I think this goes back to the way problems are resolved and handled, and we had some conversation today about the recruiting system and making sure that that issue gets addressed in a way that information is shared with the board. Looking at the community relations section, you scored her at a 3.2 on this one. Susan, can you? Thank you. A 3.2, which was one of the highest scores from the board. You see, every board member rated her at meets or exceeds expectations, and again, these go back to the way she interacts with the community and the use of social media. She is meeting the board's expectations there. Looking at the next one, pupil personnel services, this was a 3.0. Again, you see the board was unanimous in rating how she ensures the health and safety of staff and students, and scored at meet or exceeds in making sure that pupil personnel services is governed by a comprehensive plan and that she's effectively liaising between this board and the community agencies that you work with. Looking at the communication and interpersonal skills, this was a 2.8. Again, communication skills in that first indicator. She's an effective communicator in writing and verbally and the way she represents the system. There is an area for growth, though, in improving the interpersonal skills, and I believe that also relates to that last item about the way she interacts with employees and students in particular when there are issues. Looking at the next item, professional development and leadership, this was a 2.9, so just below meets expectations. The areas of strength here are her commitment to improving herself and raising student achievement and taking a leadership role in improving the education that you offer generally, but again, performing duties in an effective manner, this, again, goes back to that communication theme and that resolution of conflict and problems. Technology management was the highest score from the board at a 3.3. When you see all the areas there were scored at meets or exceeds expectations, and again, these get at the use of technology to engage students and also run the system. Looking at facilities management, this was a 3.1. The strongest performance in these two was ensuring that the property is taken care of and that personnel are safe, and, but all three of them were averaged at meets expectations. And the last one from the board is financial management, a 3.0 overall, with the highest score in the area of seeking sufficient funding for the system. Staff also agreed this was a strength in their rating of her. The areas for potential growth here really just reflected by one board member who didn't, who said it wasn't meeting expectations, or making sure that expenditures are within limits approved by the board, and ensuring that financial regulations are in compliance with state and federal laws, and this went back to a couple of items that should have gotten board approval and did not do so in a timely manner. All right, shifting gears to the direct reports, they had a slightly shorter evaluation. Susan, it's been, thank you. They, these are not categorized the way the boards were. They were asked to complete about 30 indicators, so you'll just see them here in groups of six, but they're not categorized. Overall, the direct reports rated her performance at a 3.5, so a little over a half a point higher than the board and halfway between meets and exceeds expectations. So looking at this first group, the strengths as identified by the direct reports had to do with her work to actively celebrate the accomplishments of this school system and of students, supporting innovation and setting high expectations both for the students and the staff. Her work as a leader in the curriculum, which I've already referenced. There were a couple of areas that they indicated were, could be areas of potential growth. Financial management was one, and that resolution of problems in a calm, steady manner was the other. I will note, the third one from the right is skilled at identifying and solving problems. Direct reports rated this at a 3.2, whereas the board rated it at a 2.3, so there is a gap in perception there. But when you look at the other indicators on this sheet, and frankly, on the next one, things like, the superintendent keeps me informed about system matters that are pertinent to me, was a 3.7. I'm given the opportunity to provide input on system matters that affect me, a 3.3. Superintendent maintains open, two-way communication with staff, a 3.3. And then Susan, if you'll go to, yeah, thank you, the next one. Creates opportunities for the staff and others to share ideas. All of these are things that get at what most of us consider those intangibles that keep us employed in a system, and so that having some efficacy in our roles, the ability to have input on the things that impact us in our jobs, these were scored at meets or slightly exceeds expectations. There is on this, let's see, go back... slightly exceeds expectations. There is on this, let's see, go back one, let's see. That one, thank you. The third one in from the left is a positive person who maintains composure. And I apologize, that says his composure. I'm aware you're not a his, so we will fix that in the official copy. But it maintains composure in difficult situations. This is what I've been alluding to, both from the board and the direct reports, is slightly below meets expectations. Looking at the next chart, she received one of her highest scores from the board, from the direct reports. On this chart, it's the second indicator, leads the system in celebrating academic achievements. And then you see a couple over from that, a 3.9 for taking that active role I mentioned in the development of the curriculum and improving the curriculum. But all of these were above meets expectations and several of them very close to exceeds. Looking at the next set of charts, again, a 4.3, right in the middle of this, for promoting the innovations that I mentioned earlier, a 3.8 for promoting the use of technology, which again dovetails with the board's highest rating. Her lowest score from the direct reports is also on this chart. It's the next and last one about managing the system's financial resources. So again, in that indicator having to do with finance tied to what the board had rated. Looking at the next set, she receives a slightly above exceeds expectations for providing the staff with meaningful opportunities to grow in their work. And then I will point out, the very last one, performs duties in a professional manner, was a 3.4, so almost midway between meets and exceeds. The board had rated that a 2.8. So there is some difference in the way that's perceived. So Susan, if you'll go to the next one, you see that the numbers there, the board rated her overall at a 2.9 and the direct reports at a 3.5. We do not average these together. There's five of you and 12 of the director's reports that were included and that would match the opinion of the board. And at the end of the day, this team collectively is her supervisor. So that's the number that you want to look at as you set your goals. But I do think that the direct reports' numbers should factor in. They may, they may temper some of your understanding of what the situation is, they may not. But when we get ready to do the goal setting, I think we'll look at both what the board rated and what the direct reports rated to see if these are areas that need to be addressed in terms of performance goals for next year. And then one more slide, Susan. So what do we, where we go from here? You may remember when we worked together in November, the board set performance goals for the superintendent at that time. There were, there were a pretty good number, about six, which is substantially more than we usually recommend being part of an evaluation. Because that was done in November and this was done in June, she hadn't even had really, she'd had write at six months, so we did not include them in this. So what we will do when we sit down to actually set goals for the coming year, we will have a conversation. I will ask Dr. Davis to do an executive summary for you of where she is at that point on the goals that were set in November, just by way of information. Then we will look at this instrument and that list of goals and see what would be about the top four priority items that would really be her focus for the coming year. They may be all about the system, they may be all about the results of this evaluation and personal improvement, or they may be some combination of the two. So I have, it's a little bit like standing in front of a fire hydrant. I have thrown a lot at you. Do you have any questions for me about process or results? Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to work with you. I'll just work with you and Susan to try to get the goal-setting session. And I need to get my thumb dry back.
And just as, as you go, just it's important, because I say this all the time and we see this all the time, but if you're not growing and learning and open to where you need to grow and where you need to learn, and you can only get it by these types of things because, I mean, this is two totally different, two different types in less than a year for me as a superintendent, as a first-time superintendent. And so, but if you're, and I say you, but it's me, you know, if I'm not open to that, then I'm not doing the system any good. And that's, at the end of the day, that's what I'm here for, are these kids and this community. So, you know, and it's good to see it in the different ways because then I know, I mentioned today that I was reading the book on, by Jennifer Abrams, on the multi-generational differences and how to communicate with them because it's
It is different.
It's so different. And so, that's one of the areas that looks like that I need to set a goal on. But without this and without the openness to trying to grow and get better, then I'm, you're not doing anybody any good. So I appreciate the feedback and look forward to setting those goals and moving forward.
And I do agree. I mean, at the end of the day, the evaluation is truly about helping you be a better superintendent, helping you make sure you're on the same page with the rest of this board. Just with the addition of one new member, it's going to change again. So the timing is good that we'll have the goal-setting discussion with the new member on board and, and sort of re-norm, if you will, how this team works together as a result of what we've learned from you.
And it's no different than what we ask of our teachers.
Absolutely.
Go back to sitting in that classroom, you know? You always need to look at what you can do better so that you can be more effective. So I appreciate it.
Susan, thank you and the School Board Association for a great job. We appreciate your help.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to work with you guys, and we will see you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item 6B, virtual school policy revision.
Yes. Mr. Beasley, there's one change.
Yes, ma'am, one change. And actually, we are changing it to kind of be in line with what we're doing, which is always a good thing in regard to policy. Here to fore, speaking to enrollment of new students in our, we have limited eleven to twelve year enrollment of new students to only those that are coming from policy schools, residents of the city and that kind of thing. We have gotten into some, a few situations this past year where we were about to lose some really good families. We had siblings in the program. And if we didn't accept those elevations, the families who already had siblings. So that's what we're wanting to put in policy. That is the only change. And it worked. We did it in two situations. I made an exception. And it worked. So we're comfortable with this being policy across the board.
Okay. With this being a policy revision, I'll entertain a motion. That it be tabled until next month's meeting? Some other?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Opposed? Motion passes?
6C is the pre-K parking lot expansion. And Mr. Bailey, Mr. Beasley, and Mr. Warren, sorry, he left us a year ago, Ms. Warren, we actually tried this out last year at the beginning of the year, and we halted it for the, for several reasons, to make the best decision for what we needed to at the time. So the proposal is to request this parking lot expansion. And there's, there's some explanation there. And if you have questions, we have Ms. Warren here and Mr. Bailey here and Mr. Beasley. They've been doing most of the work on that.
Got a ready question?
No.
They've responded to my questions.
Okay. All right. Superintendent recommends that the board approve item 6C.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Motion passes.
6D, we always bring before, well, I'll say always, this would be our third year, to do our annual specter care agreement to provide the licensed nurses, licensed nurses, licensed counselor, excuse me, with an additional counselor request on here. And the numbers are provided for you. Mr. Johnson has worked with, on this with Mr. Bosa. And then we have our current counselor here, who if, I know Ms. Jackson several times would say when I was in her school, "Can we have her all week?" No, we have to share. And so, it ended up being about one day a week with all of the needs that we have. And just didn't feel as if it were as beneficial as it could be for these kids by adding a second. And you'll see here the, the funding source that we have talked about, and then also a sample of schedule for her. So you could see how she was kind of spread thin as we moved into, this was our second full year of it, which we anticipated. So they can answer questions if you have, based on other systems that have moved into multiple years of this as well, and what, what this typically looks like, or is this abnormal, any, any kind of question you may have for them.
Do you think the increased expenditures in January and February were due to copays and just start-of-the-year insurance?
Actually, I, we were talking about that just prior to the meeting beginning. There was a backlog with Medicaid payments. And so, system-wide, we experienced those numbers.
Yeah, that's true.
That would be the doctor asking, "Could you probably experience the..."
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Not, the superintendent recommends that the board approve item 6D.
Some other?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes?
Item 6E is a request for a school psychometrist position, which should be 202 days, which is 10 months. It's a, it is a new position with an explanation of kind of why and how and the difference. Last year, we did contract with someone to help Dr. Crell do some of it. And it showed the, the difference in the cost, too. If approved, we would post it and see what we got. If we didn't get, we would have to go back to contracting somebody because we have to have somebody. But it is a physician, kind of like a speech therapist, where sometimes you find them, sometimes you don't. And you, but you have to have it. And so, a lot of these people have figured out, like the speech, that they'd rather just do contracts sometimes and pick the days they want to work. And that, but, but ideally, hiring a, hiring one to work for us is, is what's being recommended.
Are we recommending that position as a full-time employee because we don't think he can be satisfied with the contract?
Do you, I don't want to answer that wrong. Dr. Long, yes.
I'm, that's my, I mean, that's the genesis of the question.
Yes, Dr. Long.
Most districts do employ when they are able to.
Right.
Because the school psychometrist or school psychologist either are qualified to do the job, can pick up in many different roles, especially now that we are really focused in RTI with problem-solving team. They can go in and suggest data collection, they can work in the classroom with suggesting interventions, so that we preempt a referral for IDA/EA services that the child may not need. So ideally, you would want to hire someone per district. As Dr. Davis said, as more people are doing clinical or contract work and finding that beneficial to them, it's more difficult to find, as our therapists and different things. So I figured that both ways, where you can look, looking at the number of referrals that we have that are coming, because generally, you're looking at one-third of your population because we reevaluate every three years. Attorneys are now suggesting that we no longer go with the standard of no new data needed, but we actually do assess the students to show progress and show where we're making improvements in the children, for the children. So that is going to increase testing loads statewide.
So you believe with an employee, you'll have more work you can get out of him versus just a contract person?
True.
Okay.
And I can give you...
They're more committed.
And I can give you...
So you can go to them. I agree with that.
An example of when they are hired full-time, when I was an administrator, every month for those re-eval meetings or IEP meetings, they run those meetings because they, they are able to explain to the parents what the test results say. The principal, the assistant principal, whoever sits in, because one of them has to, they are the ones that, I don't want to say the bad guy, but the logistics of explaining those tests, it's very clear and done by that psychometrist every month. They, they run those meetings if you have them hired. That's a good question. No other questions? The superintendent recommends that the board approve item 6E.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Right, 6F is when you, the student activities, you will find what the principals turned in, principals check out in June for proposed field trips for the fall. In spring, it doesn't mean that there won't be more that they may bring to you, but these are kind of a generalization of the few that they know they will offer. With exception, the high school with all of their clubs and organizations and academies, you're going to see multiples each month. But we, kind of looking at two minor, two major a semester, this is kind of their outline with more that could come from the other schools. I was about to say, they would love another chaperone.
Too far away.
You have to go every time.
I think it's mandated at our school.
The superintendent recommends that the board approve item 6F.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Okay. And 6G, personnel you have before you, 6G1 through 6G47. through 6G47.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
I accept, I abstain from G26.
So noted? Opposed? Motion passes? Anything else to come before the board?
Yes, sir.
If not, withstand adjournment.